All right, welcome everyone to the Warminster Board of Supervisors for Thursday, August 3rd, 2023. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for one moment, for a moment of silence for all our men and women serving overseas. Thank you. All right, welcome everyone. Beautiful summer day. I do have one announcement is we had an executive session prior to this meeting to go over litigation and personnel issues. That's all I have, and I'll turn it over to Kathy.
No, no announcements tonight, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few park and rec announcements. Community yard schedule is scheduled for, community yard sale is scheduled for August the 19th, 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Warminster Community Park. Register your space at warministerpa.myrec.com. Sponsor, vendor, and information booth registrations are still open for Warminster Day, which will be September the 23rd at Warminster Community Park. New artisan vendor rate is also available for local crafters. Register online at warministerpa.myrec.com. Discount tickets are still available for Parks and Recreation Department, including the Aquarium, Morrie's Pier, Tree Top Adventures, and Trevo's, and many more. And we just talked about this before the meeting, the annual park and rec golf outing will be held at Five Ponds, and it is scheduled for October the 6th. Stay tuned for more details. I know there's not a flyer out for that yet, but there will be very soon. That's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Mark. Janice?
Well, I'm gonna kind of piggyback on the park, on our parks. There's been a lot of vandalism. I don't want to start a meeting off negative, but I just wanted to note that there's been a lot of vandalism in our parks, and it's very sad. So if you see something, say something. I do want to give a shout out to two of our youth in our community of, over at Maple Street Park and Speedway. They noticed that some people had used spray paint to put some pretty articulate graphic designs. And it was very nice of them, they went behind and got markers to match the color of the playground equipment and fixed it themselves without having to follow, I guess, proper procedure. But they wanted to fix it so that little kids wouldn't see the graphic design. So I wanted to give a shout out to Brayden and to Draven. So, thanks, guys.
All right, thank you, Janice. And one other announcement is we did bring a sheet cake in for the firemen, but...
But anyone can have it.
Anyone can have a piece, and we will have another one when we hire a few firemen in the...
I was gonna say, pull that fire lever.
That's right.
Let's not do that. No one wants to go to jail tonight.
Remember how crowded this room was at the last meeting?
Yeah.
All upset because there was no cake.
Well, we'll have another one.
I'll send him a text message.
We'll be another one when we actually do the hiring.
The police department are gonna have it tonight.
Yeah, there you go. So presentations, we do have, I believe, one of our former township supervisors, Leo Quinn, and I'm not sure who else is going.
Leo and family are going over to Warminster, England. They're traveling from England, but they're gonna make a special stop in Warminster, England. Just a little background, the mayor of Warminster, England was here seven or eight years ago. I think he came to our meeting, spent a few days in town. So Leo just happened to reach out to him, "Yeah, we'd love to see you." So he's gonna stop in to Warminster, England, and we have a proclamation on tonight's agenda for him to take with him.
Yep.
It would be terrific.
So I'll read it. So whereas we, the Board of Supervisors of Warminster Township, Bucks County, Pennsylvania, recognize our bond to Warminster, a town of over 18,000 in Wiltshire, England, which was founded during the Anglo-Saxon period, and whereas in May 2013, representatives from Warminster, England traveled to Warminster, Pennsylvania to initiate an informal connection between both towns. And whereas in September 2023, individuals from Warminster, Pennsylvania will visit Warminster, England to extend warm greetings from the Warminster, Pennsylvania community, excuse me, and whereas we hope to further build on our strong cultural and civic ties, we aim to promote and encourage the exchange of ideas and customs between our citizens. And now therefore be it resolved, Warminster Township on this second day of August are proud to reaffirm and celebrate the relationship between Warminster, England and Warminster, Bucks County, Pennsylvania. Signed by all the supervisors. And, Mark, I'll pass this over to you.
I'll make sure that gets to Mr. Quinn, and I believe there's a flag also that we're...
Yes. We have a proclamation-type item from them that's been...
It's hanging in the building here.
Well, it was in the lobby, I pulled it out so that we could check the wording. So, yeah.
Yeah, they spent a few days here. We did the 9/11 ceremony over at the Hartsfield Fire Company, they were here at the meeting, so it's nice that Leo's gonna stop in and see them on our behalf. I told him, "Well, you can be the special envoy on the board of supervisors."
I thought it was gonna be a trip for all of us.
Wow.
Just kidding.
I don't know, someday, maybe.
Evidently, council is the word they use for municipality instead of...
Okay.
Drink a beer, warm water.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Quinn sends his regards.
Thank you. Doesn't look like we have any land use matters?
No, sir.
Public hearings or ordinances? Okay, public comment. Anyone?
Johnny Preoval is texting me, he's unable to make it tonight, sends his regards.
All right, wow, first one he's missed.
Yeah, he slouched it, he's not gonna get that. Special guest star, supporting actor.
Let's move to the consent agenda. Let's consider approval of the Board of Supervisors minutes dated July 13th, 2023. Consider authorization to execute a master service agreement and associated agreements with Open Gov for permits, inspections, and project workflow software program to make changes as needed, and consider authorization to advertise RFP for snow plowing and removal services. Is there a motion?
Go ahead.
I'll move.
Second.
Okay. Tom, you wanna give a brief little explanation about the Open Gov software?
Yes.
Okay.
And I will keep it brief. The software we're using now was made at a time where there was not a lot of demands on the department, and it was reflective of what kind of like the mood at Bristol Road was at the time. So with a new contractor, with a new vendor who's, and you can see by the financial numbers, are racing to set new records for us, we need a better software system, a permit system that is easier for them to use, easy for us to get finance reports out of, easier for us to get inspection reports out of, and has a actual online portal that customers can use. And they can check on their permits with the workflow. So it's the next step that we need. We tried to work with the current provider, and they just are not cooperating. They promised us and doesn't happen.
So they're not delivering, so it's time to move on. Okay.
Right.
It is the 21st century, and customer service and portals are important.
Lisa found them, and we've talked to them, the gang at LNI has talked to them, Larry's talked to them, John's talked to them, John, and I'm pointing at Jill, I think Jill talked to them as well. So we've, they use this where, Barry, I said, works now at Lower Makefield, they use it up at Darby Township, which works there, it's gotta work anyway. I mean, it's the biggest, it's like the third biggest city in Pennsylvania.
That's what Tom told me today when I called, because I wanted some more details about it, and I said, "I think this is great because then everything's gonna be in sync over there, and that's what we want."
Right, and it's user-friendly for people to go along.
Correct, right, yes.
Which is...
And for us to use.
Yes. Okay. Any questions, comments? Questions, comments from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries four zero.
Thank you.
All right, financial report, Mr. McKee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion, I'll ask for a second, do we accept the bill list, approve the bill list? Bill list dated July 20, 2023, in the amount of $1,489,165.51. Supplemental bill list dated July 31st, 2023, in the amount of $218,756.48, with a grand total of $1,707,921.99.
You say that so well.
Practice. All right, Jill?
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, okay.
We're seconding together.
All right, any questions or comments?
Yep.
From the public? Let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries four.
When I'm done here, Janice, I'm gonna be a game show.
All right, John, you're up.
I'll re-brief again, because things are still looking good. Revenues are up from last year through the end of June by $960,000. Just to give a quick update on what makes up that, EIT revenue is up 230,000, which is 8%, which is tracking from the same month, from last month. Building electrical permits is what I touched on last month, too. They're up 893,000. So of this, it's kind of one-time revenues that we can't count on, but it's always great to have. What they're making up for is there was a downturn in transfer tax. As of the end of June, we're down 143,000. So things are still looking good compared to last year, but we can't count on some of these revenues over and over again. On the expense side, expenses are up 576,000. The bulk of that is because of the building electrical permits being up, it costs more, we give a percentage to the inspectors. So LNI, the budget's up, or the expense is up, 690,000. So besides, if you take out that 690, all the other expense line items in total are actually down on the year. So just because we're selling more permits, we have more expenses, so everything's going good. Besides that, the only other thing since Bobby isn't here, the taxes are going good. We only have 162,000 outstanding as of the end of June, out of 8.6 million. So we're tracking right at...
That's incredible.
98% collected, same as last year, so hopefully final notices will go out, and we'll knock that number down even more. Saves a lot of heartache by people paying on time.
Absolutely.
She's amazing.
Helps us to par bills and keep the township moving forward. Yeah, thank you. Thanks to the residents for that.
Yeah, thank you.
Any questions?
Not tonight, John.
All right.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you.
Happy birthday, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We have a cake over there.
Well, if we light candles, then we might have...
I have a little cake, I like fire trucks.
If we light the candles, we might need the fire department there, right?
If you want to get the next one.
Okay, so yeah, no unfinished business, we'll go write the new business, and John, you're up for the audit.
All right, so the audit statements are in, they are available online by going to the website. Along with the statements, there are two other letters that I'm gonna read some of the highlights from. Next month, hopefully we'll have the auditor out to go over some of the meat of the financials. I just want to share with everyone the good news, steal some of her thunder, that there were no findings, there are no problems within management. So this is a couple of the words I'm cherry picking out of different letters and...
So you mean the reconciliations, we're done on time?
Oh, yes.
It's always good to hear.
Whenever we're down these numbers, the reconciliations are done. So in the financial statements, the most important sentence is, this is from the auditors, "In our opinion, the company financial statements present fairly in all material aspects the representative financial position of the government." So that's probably the most important sentence out of the 110 pages in here, saying that if you're looking at this, you can trust what you're looking at.
Clean on it.
Yep.
Good. Awesome.
Two other letters that are gonna be available online. The first one is a 265 letter, it's communicating the internal controls related to matters identified in the audit. Very specifically, it defines what a deficiency and what a material weakness are. These are things that are extremely frowned upon, it would just say, "You can't rely on these statements if you have these." To quote the letter, "We did not identify any deficiencies in internal control that we consider to be a material weakness." So that's good news.
More good news.
Very good.
Thanks, John.
And one last one, there's a 260 letter, which is auditor's communication with those charged with governance. So this is literally a letter from the auditors to you guys as the board. I'll skip some of the things that actually describe what the auditor's requirements are, and get right into, there's three sections here. One, significant difficulties encountered during the audit. To quote them, "We encounter no significant difficulties dealing with management relating to the performance of the audit." The second, the next section, uncorrected and corrected misstatements, there were no material uncorrected misstatements. Again, we can trust what's in the financials. And the last one, disagreements with management, no such disagreements arose during the course of the audit. So these are, these are all things I love seeing in letters, so I'll cherry pick them out every year and read them off to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
And well done, John. Very well done.
So we're gonna have the audit available on our website.
Yes.
It's a public document now, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well done, John, thank you. All right. Now, I see our library director is here tonight, Peter. We're going to consider awarding the library renovation project bid to TNE Construction for a total of $301,500. Is there a motion?
Motion.
I'll second.
Okay. Peter, congratulations, I think we have an excellent contractor and all the subcontractors, they all meet the RCO, is that correct?
We've done the contractor.
Have you seen the subcontractors?
I haven't seen the, we have the subcontractors list, I haven't seen their forms for the...
They're all in here, but I'm pretty sure that they all meet the RCO.
The contractor definitely did, but yeah, we don't really see the subcontractor stuff after the award is made.
Okay.
When do you think they'll get busy?
I thought we had that scheduled for mid-September.
Oh, good, it'll be done before Christmas, before holidays.
Oh, I hope so, yeah.
Nice.
Four-month project.
Oh, it's four months? Really? Wow.
Great.
But thank you, yeah, that's wonderful news.
Yeah, we're excited about it, yeah. Library needs, definitely needs some renovations and...
Needs a makeover.
Does need a makeover.
I'm sure our friend Jerry Shadrus watching right now, should be pleased.
Yeah, Jerry.
Hi, Jerry.
All right, so any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Michael Rockfield for being here, he's a project architect.
Much more up, coming up to the podium. Who you want to come on to?
Yeah, good evening, everyone.
Do you wanna introduce him to you, Ken?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank, our architect's been a pleasure to work with, Michael and his associate Linda, and they've created some great plans. It was their idea to build study rooms in addition to the restroom. And, yeah, I mean, our primary patrons are senior citizens and families with young children, so building an ADA-friendly and family restroom speaks directly to our mission. We are known as the library in the area that has the best programs and the best events. And so adding a restroom and allowing us to have more people in the building, allowing families to use, to change diapers and use the restroom together.
Yep, I have one request, because when I was still working, I worked at King of Prussia Mall a lot, and in the family restroom at the King of Prussia Mall, they had fresh flowers every day.
Okay, all right.
Brand-new bathroom over there, it'd be nice to have fresh flowers.
How often do you go there?
Oh, no, when I was still working, I worked there a lot.
And he remembered the flowers.
Right, yeah, they had fresh flowers in the family bathroom.
If we're gonna have flowers, let's not have the same one like we have the wreath.
If I was working in the area, I'd stop there.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd make a pit stop. Just a suggestion.
At least in the beginning, it's a good idea. And thank you on behalf of the staff, because this allows the staff to have a better lounge area for lunch breaks with a window and not like, kind of a dungeon-y area. And as you know, the restrooms are, renovations are sorely needed, so...
Yes, oh, yeah, yeah. Oh, yeah, they're like Vet Stadium.
We're excited.
Yeah, thank you to everyone involved.
We can't wait.
And it's nice that you've maintained the best library for programs. Well done.
We hear it all the time, so thanks.
We hear it all the time, too, and that is a tribute to your management and all the people you have working with you. You're doing a great, everybody's doing a great job, seriously.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
You're welcome. All right, any other questions from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? And the chair votes aye, motion carries four zero.
That's a good one.
Okay, next one, to consider First Amendment to employment agreement for Mr. Tom Scott, our township manager. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Okay.
We can both second.
Sure.
We all agree.
I did read the amendment, Tom, I told you before the meeting, I think I'd have shook him down for a little more money if I were you.
It's only the First Amendment. It's only the First Amendment, but it'll be good for at least a year, right?
Now, Tom, we're happy that, we're thrilled that the team, again, I say this all the time, and I mean this sincerely, this board has put together an incredible management team, and we can see it in the improvements to the township, the fact that we have balanced budgets, we can afford to pay for police and fire and all the other services we provide, and we wouldn't be able to do that without a good management team, and of course, you're at the top, Tom, so we're happy to vote to renew your employment agreement, and well done.
Thank you, I want to share a similar sentiment, I think, you know, coming in here a few years ago, I didn't know what to expect, and I think the board has a great dynamic, and hopefully will continue to even after Mr. McKee leaves, and...
They're gonna miss me, though.
Yeah.
We are gonna miss the humor, and yeah, that's true.
You guys have been great to work with, and I appreciate the faith and confidence, but Mr. Hayes is correct, we have an amazing, amazing management staff that, I don't know how we got so lucky, between the chief and John and Peter, Jill, everybody else we got, Sultan's are good.
I know how we got so lucky. Tom, it wasn't luck. Let's put it that way.
Don't forget Jessica Fox.
That's right.
Don't forget Jessica Fox.
Right.
And Lisa Howdyshall.
I'm watching.
Yeah, Lisa and Jessica, yeah, and Andrew.
And Andrew, let's not forget Andrew. Yes, and all the...
Kid and Jim.
And the staff that work at the township.
And Joe, and, yeah.
Staff do a great job.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, anything else, Tom?
That is it, thank you, sir.
All right, any questions or comments from the public? All right, let's call a question. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Chair votes aye, motion carries four zero. Tom, thank you.
Thank you.
And looking forward to working with you for another year, without any amendments.
It's two years.
Oh, two years, even better.
Even better. Snuck that in on me.
Very smart, I picked up on it.
All right, professional reports.
He's great to work with, though, when I bring things to him, he dresses it.
Right away?
Yeah.
We got you some baggy tunes.
All right, township manager.
Some cake over there. Cake, everybody have some cake, please. So I want to, I was gonna comment on this independently of what Supervisor Scharlton said, because we have been seeing a lot of vandalism in our parks, especially Warminster Community Park, I mean, the things people do to the bathrooms, the pavilions, we've had the basketball court, which were, you know, less than two years old, have been vandalized, and we're gonna have to have it repaired now.
And then Safety Town was...
Safety Town.
It's terrible, every time I go over there, something, seriously.
And then there are other places, there are other facilities that get it, too, but I, and obviously, the human condition being what it is, you know, my only, my only statement to just back up what Janice said, Mrs. Scharlton said, is that if you see something, please report, you don't have to report it then and there, you know, but we need to know, because only through us getting an idea of when it happens and, you know, where it happens, can we start to understand how attractive or available the targets are. And, you know, we, we're not the only municipality that suffers from this, of course, they all, we all do, but it's, it's an expensive proposition. We're gonna be paying close to $484,000 in liability insurance this year, it's a huge jump from last year, and it's gonna go up again for '24. So we, the more, you know, if we can get the claims filed, and get the insurance involved, it helps with the cost, hits the premium, but also it's just, it's kind of, it's debilitating, I think, you know, when we have to see this time and time again. I mean, we put pavilions, bathrooms and pavilions in for a reason. If you wanna screw around, you know, we got, you know, go for a jog, there's a nice path that goes for...
Go get lost in a woods.
Go, you know, hit the tackling dummy, I'm sure there's one out there somewhere, so...
Can I ask a question, Tom, for follow-up? We had spoken some time ago that we were gonna get cameras in the park to help with that?
Yeah, right.
Where are we with that?
Well, we're writing up the RFP that we wanna put in to, working with Mr. Holbert, to cover everything that we wanted to cover. We were struggling to find somebody who could advise us what to put in the RFP, because everybody we talked to said, "Oh, no, wait a minute, I wanna bid on this." You know, so we, we had a, we kind of ran into a situation where we had some interested parties, but they weren't gonna help us with the bidding process, because they wanted to bid themselves. So now, we're gonna write it ourselves. We think we know what we want, and it's gonna be general, it's going to be, it's gonna cover all our facilities, all the area of facilities we have, including this building, and we'll see what kind of response we get. We know that there are interested parties out there.
So it's gonna be a design and build RFP?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay.
And we'll see what kind of term it is, too, I hope that there is.
Well, let's hope so. I mean, honestly, if you're going to start defacing recreational equipment and parks and rec, you don't have any respect for yourself, let alone your community.
Exactly.
That's a disgrace.
Especially since we're getting ready to put all the equipment over there.
Exactly. Last month, we approved that beautiful playground.
Right.
Right.
And we wanna keep taxes low in the township, but if we have to pay our employees to go fix graffiti and replace equipment, that's money that's gonna have to come from somewhere.
And our insurance premiums go up.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly, so, you know, speak to, you know, the kids, it's not all the teenagers, I, I mean, people always wanna blame the kids.
We're gonna find out who it is.
We are.
Eventually.
I don't think, I don't think everything over there is the teenagers here, because there's some things over there that I think is beyond that scope, and we just need to figure out what's going on, and then, then we'll let the chief and...
We're not gonna assign blame yet until we have visual proof.
Yeah, so keep us posted on the process.
Yeah.
And everybody that has a cell phone, if you see something, take a picture of it.
Yeah, in the meantime, I know that the vandalized, what is it, bounce court or whatever it's called? Bank shot, bank shot. Yeah, I mean, I know local 19 sheet metal workers remade, refabricated four backboards, and then District Council 21, Mark and I's unions actually painted them. They look great, they're gonna be installed, and that'll be back up and running, and hopefully...
It's a shame, somebody donated money for that, somebody donated that.
I know. I know.
And then the, and then the, don't forget that the fabrication and painting to build brand-new ones was donated as well, the metal and the paint and the labor to do it.
So I honestly think we get some cameras up there might help to cut down on it. You're never going to solve it all, but.
Yeah, I talked to Tom last week about that. I said, are we going to, are we going to look into that? And he says, well, we are working on it. So I'm glad we have an update tonight, because again, we want to keep our park looking beautiful so that everybody can go and enjoy it.
And we want to make sure we're taking the proper precautions with the library, with the golf course.
Sure. Oh, with that, I mean, everywhere, 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 yes.
Show respect, and then, you know, for what we have, so that we can spend money for better projects rather than fixing things that are damaged.
Right, right, yep.
Great, thanks, Tom. Anything else?
That's all I have. Thank you very much, ladies and gentlemen.
All right. Mr. Holbert?
Happy summer, everyone. See you in September. No, I do, nothing business-wise. I just say, just continue with the parks, you know. Looking forward to Memorial, or not Memorial Day, Labor Day weekend. My daughter plays in the Alperini soccer tournament every year.
Oh, yeah?
She has a great time, so we'll be back again that Sunday, so. See you then.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you. Mr. Kanner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be shorter than the manager's report tonight. We have an update on the public works. He doesn't get a chuckle out of them. Your public works, fuel tanks is, I mentioned that last week. We have a schedule, and we're keeping that. So hopefully, we'll have an award for you in September's meeting.
When's that going out to bid?
I didn't bring the schedule.
Okay, but it'll be this month?
Yes, yes. And then we'll have it ready, hopefully, for award at your September's meeting. The road program update, actually, on the concrete curb ADA ramps, they're about sixty percent done. Working on the first payment for the contractor for that. And then, just an update, we had planning commission last week. Five fifty Davisville Road waiver of land development was on, and that's an existing light manufacturing building. They're working with the staff to try to come into compliance, and I think we made some progress at the planning commission meeting. They're going to clean up the plans, resubmit for review. I'll probably have a staff meeting to get Scott involved with their attorney, and hopefully draft some conditions for approval in maybe September, October, and hopefully button that site up a little bit. I know that's been a, you know, some issues over a lot of years that I've been here with the neighbors. So hopefully, that place will get cleaned up and come into performance. And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Great, thanks, Greg. All right, time, Tom.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, before I blow into mine, do we want to see if we can do without the August seventeenth POS meeting?
Yes, please.
No objection.
No objection.
So that would put us onto the next, I believe, would be September the seventh.
Correct.
All right. And at that meeting, I want to, I want to update the board on all the projects that we've, we've initiated or completed or are on, or just breaking inertia on now, including the library and Warner, from, from last year and this year. And I think once we, once we see that list, you'll see that it's, it's considerable, you know, and it's.
Absolutely.
It's been great having, you know, ARPA money and, and some of the municipal bond loan money. And we've seen two years' worth of street paving, two years' worth of curbs. Shenandoah Woods, gone. Bye-bye to the houses, goodbye to the slabs, and like that. So we'll, we'll have that for the board, report on the board at the next meeting.
Tom, when do you think we'll be able to deal away with the security over there? I noticed we still have security over there every day.
Yes.
I guess that's kind of indefinite until we develop it, huh?
I'm, I'm not, I don't want to be the one that says we don't need security. And on the next day, whatever's left over there is burnt to the ground.
Yeah, right, yeah.
I mean, I know the buildings are all gone for the most part. Might be a shed up somewhere, but I've asked the RDA to keep the security there, literally, until further notice.
Right. So goodbye to the houses that were falling down, and goodbye to the slabs, and hello to a nice park design.
Yep. Nice walking trails.
Yep.
Passive stormwater management.
It is beautiful, really, the work that they did.
It's going to be very nice.
Beautiful. Looking forward to that report, Tom. Thanks for a little teaser that you just gave us.
Thank you.
All right, round two, public comment. John? John's not here. Sorry, John. We missed you.
Yeah, very sad.
All right, supervisors' comments. I'd just like to say thanks for, to the residents for paying their taxes. It's, it's so much easier to manage and budget in a township when everyone's cooperating. We've done some great things with this tax dollars. We've spent it in the township. And I want you, everyone, to have a great summer. It's still, still have two or three weeks, weeks left, I think, before school starts. So drivers, be careful. When there's a ball rolling out in the street, there's usually a kid that follows it. I've seen that about five million times in Seattle City this year. And please remember to drive safely and stay within the speed limit. Thank you. Kath?
I also would like to wish everyone, enjoy the rest of your summer, and be cognizant of how fast you're driving on some of our streets, because it's twenty-five miles an hour, and a lot of those streets have a lot of children, so just try to be careful when you're driving through the neighborhoods. Also want to say, great productive meeting again tonight, and I, it's great to hear all the improvements that we're going to be making in the township, and all the financial impasses that we have been able to overcome. And I'm really excited to hear of Tom's comprehensive report next month, but it is exciting, all of, all of the improvements that are being done. It's amazing, and I think we've all done well as a board. So congratulations to all of us for doing a great job.
Well, thanks, Greg. Thank you.
No, seriously, you know, I'm sure the residents are very happy.
I would hope so. All right, thanks, Kath. Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to wish everyone the rest of, happy rest of your summer, and wish everybody a happy Labor Day, because we won't see the folks till, till Labor Day. Being a blue-collar worker myself, I always appreciate it.
And what does that mean?
No work on Labor Day. Exactly what that means.
There you go.
Remember, we were working.
That's right.[1712.62]